Brian, we're expecting a front page story about that clock.
Yeah.
No, don't. Somebody would yell that we spent money on it.
Okay, we got, what, 20 seconds? There's no second hand, is there? There is there? Yeah, okay, I can just barely see it. I was gonna say, this is, you know.
It's the little things.
Huh? That's right. It's too fast, time's there. There you go. Okay, within five seconds. Is everyone ready?
It's ready when you are.
All right. I'd like to call the Monday, October 1, 2018 Oakwood City Council meeting to order. Would you please rise and join me with the pledge to the flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please, Lori?
Mayor Duncan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Byington.
Here.
Mr. Stevens.
Here.
Mrs. Hilton.
Here.
Mr. Epley.
Here.
And may I have a report on the minutes of our September 17 regular session and work session? Mrs. Hilton?
Yes, Your Honor, I've reviewed the minutes from both of those meetings and I found them to be correct and complete. And therefore, I move that they be adopted as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, so ordered. Under status reports, we have no status reports this evening. We do have two special visitors this evening. And our first visitor is Matt Lindsey, who is the manager of the environmental planning at Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission. And he's going to talk about our regional trails and bikeways. And I believe, Matt, you're also a resident of Oakwood, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Well, welcome, and look forward to hearing your report.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Matt Lindsey. I'm, as said, with the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission. My wife, Karen, has come with me tonight. We walked here because the great thing about Oakwood is it's as walkable as it is bikeable.
Oh, great.
So I want to thank you, the council and the staff, for inviting me to come and speak this evening. I am a resident of Oakwood, I live on the 200 block of Wilchar. So I have four general topic areas that I want to go over each a little bit, for a little bit of time. Under the broad umbrella of talking about the boom in cycling that's going on here in the Miami Valley. So let's start with a discussion of the Miami Valley Trails. Are you all able to see this, too?
Yes, we have a screen in front of us. Yes.
Thank you. So the Miami Valley Trails are the region's system of shared use paths comprising over 340 connected miles of trail, including the Dayton-Kettering Connector, which runs right along the border of Oakwood, the boundary. We at the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission and our partner agencies that manage these trails, we manage, we market them as if they are one thing, the Miami Valley Trails. We publish a single map of the entire system. We maintain a website about the entire system. But really, they are 12 different systems. They're managed by 12 different park districts, mostly park districts, across 10 counties. So our shared tagline is that this is the nation's largest paved trail network. We've been using that line for three years and no one has challenged us on it yet, so we're sticking with it. So, well, so this map is a little too, there's too much, too many small numbers on this to be able to see on the screen, but it's in, I did provide a handout of this map as well, it's on your desk. The trail managing agencies across the region maintain a network of automated counters along the trails. There's, including one that's right below Patterson Boulevard or Patterson Road on the Dayton-Kettering Connector, right where the underpass is. An MVRPC collects all of this data from these 12 agencies from across the region and we compile the data to calculate usage rates for the trails. So then there's ways in which we aggregate them based on the number of days in which the thing was operating and we aggregate them, we average them over a course of three years. And what you come up with was a total of about 793,000 annual visits to the trails. That's repeat visits for people who use it more than once, that's included in that. But it's seven, so just under 800,000 visits to the trails, so they're well-used. We also partner with trail managing agencies across the region to conduct trail user surveys. We do them every four years, and the last one we did was last year in 2017. From the survey data, we can learn where people are from that use the trails. And this heat map shows the zip codes from the 1,170 respondents we got to the survey this year. Well, not surprisingly, most of the responses come from people right around here, from the region. About four in five are from the seven counties that were part of the survey. But about one in six people from, were from some other part of Ohio, from outside those seven counties. And that bluish circle around it is the 100-mile radius around the trail counties. And about 4%, a little over 4% of our trail users from the survey are from outside that 100-mile boundary. And that's, that 100-mile thing is, was important for our partners at the convention and visitors bureaus because that's the, that's the distance they use that usually it gets associated with a hotel stay, an overnight stay. People who come from more than 100 miles are probably gonna stay overnight. And that's important to them because, of course, CVBs are supported by the hotel tax, but also it's a, it's a gauge of how attractive of a tourist attraction these trails are from outside the region. So, these trails are popular in part because they are so well-maintained. We have asked about user satisfaction with the trails in every survey. And we consistently see that over 90% of trail user survey takers tell us that the trails are safe, clean, and well-maintained. They either give it an excellent or very good. And I know that Oakwood has contributed to that number with, because of the city assists with patrols along the DK Connector, so I want to thank you for being part of the success of the trails across our region. We did a different kind of analysis, though, of these responses this year. We'd never done this before. We wanted to see if there were perceptions, if the perception of safety on the trails differed between men and women. And what we found from the survey is that there really isn't a difference on that question. Just like the users as a whole, men and women in general, find the, find the trails to be very safe. And then there are a series of questions in that survey that are designed to calculate the trail's economic impact for the region based on the number of users and their reported spending and their reported rates of use of the trail, frequency of use of the trail. We calculate an annual regional economic benefit of about $13.5 million as an average for the entire region. And then with the health benefits and the quality of life enhancements from the trail, I hope you'll agree that the trail system has been a great investment for the region over the past 40 years. And there are other great initiatives going on around the Miami Valley that enhance the region's bike friendliness. So, communities are each putting their own priorities and character into the ways that they support bike friendliness into the region. Some are holding events and others are striping bike lanes, designating connections to the regional trails. So this map shows the current regional trail network across the counties right around Dayton. And then these extra red lines indicate the areas, the bike lanes or side pass that communities have added that connect to the trails and enhance the network and make the trails more accessible to their neighborhoods or their downtowns. The League of American Bicycleists has something called a Bike Friendly Community Program that designates communities on the bronze, silver, gold, platinum scale in terms of their bike friendliness. And this map, those communities there in pink, blue, whatever comes up on the screen, these are the communities that have been awarded bronze status within our region. There are five of those. And there are also 11 bike-friendly businesses within our region. So a complete streets policy is a way for a community to ensure that all transportation projects take into account the consideration of needs for bicyclists and pedestrians across the project or along the project. And these communities in blue are those that have adopted local complete streets policies on, in one form or another, either as an ordinance or just a policy. And also, of course, MVRPC has adopted our regional complete streets policy back in 2011. So that, this is a way of making sure that funding, that transportation funding that gets spent in our region is done in such a way that it takes into the consideration the needs of all users on the road. And then there are safe routes to schools plans, those and programs that encourage K through eight students to walk or bike to school and identify improvements that make that choice safer and more comfortable. These communities, shown here in yellowish, are those that have adopted safe routes to schools travel plans that have been endorsed by the, by ODOT, by Ohio Department of Transportation. There are 17 of those across the region. So there's lots of different ways that different communities are trying to enhance the ability of people to do active transportation, biking and walking safely. And I'm aware of some of Oakwood's efforts, and I want to make sure we note those. The city has published walking and biking maps. These are great ways to encourage people to get out and see the community, but also do so in an active way. And of course, your sidewalks maintenance program is a model for the region. I don't know of any better in the region. The walking school district represents a tremendous partnership between the city and the school district in terms of safety and, and community spirit and awareness. The Shorey Road Project, of course, is a headline project for Oakwood and it demonstrates the community's commitment to safety and also builds that seamless connection along Shorey Road up to the trails network. So it's a wonderful project and a bunch of others. And then there's the speed logger. This picture was taken by a friend of mine, he was running towards the speedlogger. If it would capture the movements of a person. It's a brilliant approach to traffic calming and it's one that I think the city should, when you're ready, share with the wider Miami Valley community. Once you have enough data and you're pretty sure about the benefits that you receive for the, for the costs, it's the kind of thing that you could create presentation and share with law enforcement conferences, safety injury prevention groups across the region. It's really a wonderful program that you've done. The whole region can benefit from what the city will have learned from that, from that project that you've been doing. And I've probably left some stuff off the list, right? I know there's an annual bike rodeo and there's Walk to School Day. The farmer's market is another great way of activating a space for pedestrians, at least, you know, once, one day a week. And there's bike parking in the shopping district and there's probably stuff that you know of that I, that you're disappointed now that I haven't said. But it's, it's been a great effort to take what is a truly wonderful walking community and make sure that it's being taken advantage of. So, last thing I wanted to talk about is just some of the MVRP services. If the city and any of, any of our MVRPC members, including Oakwood, is interested in doing a little bit more, there may be some ways that MVRPC can help. We would love to help you with a walking or a biking audit for a particular part or neighborhood of the, or stretch of the, of the community. Audits are a great way to experience a street or a neighborhood from the perspective of a pedestrian or a cyclist or people with disabilities or transit riders. These audits are a great way to consider some of these, the answers to some of, a lot of different kinds of questions like these up here about neighborhood vitality or safety or whether or not your kids are safe or there's good connections between your residents and your parks. There's all kinds of interesting and good questions that you can answer. And they are a great way for the city staff and the elected officials to engage with city residents and business owners and/or different kinds of groups within the city. So we'd love to talk to you about opportunities that if you are interested in doing a walking, walking audit in part of, part of the city and as an MVRPC member, you've already paid for it. You've paid for my time to assist you with that and to do the audit and I'd be happy to talk with your staff anytime about doing stuff like that. Another thing is something we call demonstration projects or live previews. This could be another approach to thinking through bike and walk friendliness in town. Sometimes an idea will bubble up during one of those walking audits of, well, we should try a different kind of crosswalk here or adding a bump out there. And this is a great way to try it in an inexpensive, low-commitment way with temporary materials like tape and cones and spray chalk and even hay bales or temporary signs before you invest in a permanent change made with concrete and steel that is very expensive. So you put it up for a week and you evaluate how it works and then you take it down if it didn't work or you make it permanent if it does. Or you can just evaluate it over a weekend if there was something you wanted to do in concert with one of the farmer's market days next spring or summer to see how pedestrian flow would change if you did this or that. It's the kind of thing you can just test to see what it does. And again, we at MVRPC would love to, we'd be happy to devote some of our staff time to help the city plan and execute one of these things. These tend not to be free in terms of the materials you might need, but my time, again, would be available to you. So again, I thank you for the opportunity to share with you some of what's going on across the region and what MVRPC does for, to try and assist some of our members. And I'm happy to take any questions or comments.
Questions for Matt?
All right, good presentation.
You know, I know that Vice Mayor Byington is our representative to MVRPC.
Right.
And, you know, we're appreciative. I think the speed logger was interesting because we originally received citizen complaints that people thought there was excess speeding on certain roads in Oakwood. And, and I think what the logger has found is, is that that was in fact not the case, but we were trying it at different times of the year, you know, especially on Kramer Road, you know, by the Dayton Country Club, you know, doing it in the fall and then again in the spring when golf season was getting ready to start. And, and I, I think it was on Far Hills this morning as I come rolling down the line now. The fact that my radar detector went crazy and there was a police car right in front of me. I was definitely 35 or 34 when I went down that road. But, but I think that is, and we are collecting data.
Yes.
And so I know when Chief Hill comes back this fall to give us a presentation, I think he will give us an update on that.
First time I saw it, it was on Hathaway and it was there for a week and then it disappeared. And I thought, oh, then I realized you were moving it around.
We thought someone, we thought someone stole it, but they did not.
Well, again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Matt, we appreciate your efforts. Okay. And our next special visitor is our Ohio State Representative, Jim Butler, who is also an Oakwood resident. Welcome, Jim.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council. Just wanted to give you a quick update, what's going on with the legislature right now. We are currently at the very end of a two-year session. Every, every two years, the process, you introduce bills, you go through committee, then it goes to the floor and get voted on. But at the end of a two-year period, just like Congress, it's the same way, you have to start over. So if it doesn't pass before the end of the two-year period, which ends in 2018, then all the, all the bills that haven't passed are dead. And what that means is during what's called the lame duck session, which happens after the election, because immediately preceding the election, then we are on recess, which we are currently on. Then every, after the election, then there's a flurry of activity. That's a very dangerous time because you have all this legislation that's, that's moving very quickly and you have a lot of what's called logrolling or putting bills onto other bills that happen to be going through during that period of time because there's only so much bandwidth that the legislature can handle. So these bills just get bigger and bigger and bigger and there's always a lot of last-minute adding of different bills. Which means for us, there are a lot of sleepless nights because many times a bill will be added the night before you're going to be voting on it, the final vote on the floor or concurrence with the Senate. Or sometimes, and this has certainly happened, it's one hour or 30 minutes before you're voting on it. And we can't even see it except for on our computers that we have on the floor. So we, we're just sitting there waiting for some bill to pop up with all these changes that were added, usually by the Senate, and the House does the same thing to the Senate. And you have to hurry up and read it and understand it. And of course, hopefully then have time to check with the people that might be impacted. But of course, if it's half an hour, that's probably not likely to all happen. So that's why it's a dangerous time during lame duck. And really, in my opinion, there shouldn't be, that shouldn't happen. Because most of the time, you're gonna get a bad result. You're gonna get a result that, that the people, you know, if, if this was vetted, they would maybe object or different interest groups might object. So unfortunately, we can't get rid of, I can't get rid of it, so I have to do my best and I certainly will do that. So I wanted to brief you on some of my priorities for the lame duck session, if, if these bills might pass. And most of them are small, but then a couple of other issues I wanted to bring to your attention that are either on the ballot coming up in November or have already passed and will impact Oakwood. So, the first bill I would like to talk about is the Military Member and Spouse License Reciprocity Bill. This was a bill that I drafted. My joint sponsor is Representative Paralus. In the Senate, we have joint sponsors, Senator Laner and Beagle. And also Senator Hackett is a big supporter and co-sponsor of the bill. But what this does is it allows for military families, when they're moving from one duty station to the other. And obviously, we're a military town, we have Wright-Patterson Air Force Base, so many members are, are here. But when you have to move from one duty station to the other and you have usually a spouse who's licensed to practice their profession in their home state, it's nursing, teaching, plumbing, you know, all those different things. And then you go to a new state, you have to be relicensed in the new state. That takes, that takes time. Sometimes it takes a long time. And what happens is that the, your spouse, and sometimes the military member can actually work and their physicians can do it, too, but there's a period where you can't, you can't work. And if you have a family to support, that's a problem. So what ends up happening, military families will separate even though they're not even on deployment. They're here, you know, in our area or in some other area in the United States and the spouse stays behind and, so they can continue to practice their profession while their, their, their application is processing and they're providing all this paperwork to try to be licensed in our state. So this is a problem that was actually, it's, it's something that's been around for a while. We've always tried to make it better. But the urgency of the problem was brought to my attention by the Secretary of the Air Force, Heather Wilson, at an event several months ago. And she said, you know, there's two things that we care most about in the military that we really want states to listen to. One is education, want to make sure that our members, when they're stationed in your state, are well-educated and have great opportunities. And number two is this licensure. So we drafted it actually somewhat different way than a lot of other states have done because there's always a lot of pushback. So whatever profession might be impacted says, no, your requirements in, you know, Arkansas are only 900 hours and in Ohio, they're 1,000 hours. So we don't think that you're adequately trained to practice your profession here in Ohio. And then they'll object to the bill and the bills don't pass. That's the way it is in all over the country. We took a different approach. We said, if you come to Ohio, we'll give you a temporary license. So you can practice your profession, not with an Ohio license, but with your home state license. So your home state license has to remain in good standing. Every year, we'll check to make sure it's still in good standing, but that you'll be able to practice your profession here in Ohio up to the scope of your practice in your home state, but also the scope of your practice in Ohio. So a lot of times, those are different. So for example, in the medical field, you might have nurses in one state have prescriptive authority, for example, for certain drugs, and, and other states not as much. So in that case, you know, if they were here, they would, they wouldn't be able to practice to the scope in their home state prescribing the drugs. They'd have to abide by Ohio's scope of practice and vice versa. If they, they couldn't do more than they can do in their home state because Ohio has a larger scope of practice. That approach has gained a lot of acceptance among various groups that have been opposing the past this type of legislation. We were able to get every veteran in the Senate and the House to co-sponsor the bill. So, and we have support and leadership in both houses. So we are optimistic that, you know, not in a secret, middle-of-the-night manner that I mentioned earlier, but in a very forthright manner, that this legislation has a chance potentially passing during the lame duck session because there is some urgency for us. I mean, of course, we want to be attractive to military missions, additional missions for Wright-Patt. But most importantly, we want to make sure that any military member and their, and their family that comes to Ohio is not going to be, you know, separated and face additional hardship when they already face so much hardship and give, give so much for our country. So that's House Bill 716, so hopefully we'll be able to get that done. Another bill that I've mentioned to Council before is the Cure Bill. The Cure Bill is, if that was kind of a fix that, that's more on a small scale, but still very important. The Cure Bill is very large-scale. And what this does is address one of the problems that we have in terms of research and development in healthcare in general. Because there's a financial incentive in the private sector to make sure that whatever they do, they do for as long as possible so they get as much money as possible. So when you're a private pharmaceutical company, you're developing a drug, if you can give somebody a shot and cure them, like one shot, that's, they're not gonna do that. They're not gonna invest money and look for that. They're gonna invest money in something they can do over a longer period of time and preferably the rest of your life so they can continue to make money, as much money as possible. They have a duty to their shareholders, I don't blame them, but that's the way our system works. So that's about two-thirds of research and development out there. And the other one-third is mainly government, some charity research, but that's basic science research. That never develops a product, that never develops something that goes through the FDA process that you then take. Some private organization always has to take that and move it to that stage and get it through the FDA process so that it's available to the public. And because of those, those are, those are the two areas of research and development. For a shot or for something that's not even a pharmaceutical agent, it could be anything. That cures chronic diseases that cost our system tons of money and especially lives and, and suffering. Really, nobody is out there that's doing that work. We don't have that, it's not in our system. And so what this bill does is try to provide the incentive for there to be lots of people who are doing that. Because what it does is it says, if you are to develop a cure, if you, if you do come out with something that's over a short period of time that then cures a large percentage of the, of the people that have a disease, for say, something like Alzheimer's dementia. Obviously, that's something that's, that's really a horrible disease that somebody would get. But if you are able to cure that, if you were to prescribe, for example, an agent that somebody would take over a shorter period of time or even prevent it, say, something that just prevents the onset of it, then we'll start saving money. So we would say, you know, for Alzheimer's dementia, that's of course very expensive out there. But it, but if that were to happen, over, and what the bill does is say, over a five-year period of time, the amount of money that each state, and each state can kind of join this, it's called a multi-state compact, or the federal government can or even other countries can, but we pledge then five years of what we save. So there's no risk to the taxpayers. We're not funding, this is not a, we're gonna appropriate a bunch of money and research it, which we've seen in the past and it hasn't been successful. What we're doing instead is we're keeping all the research that's already out there that the government does. We're not changing the private sector, we're not changing the, the, the public side. We're just saying, if you cure something, we'll give you the first five years of what we save. If no cures happen, we lose no money, nothing happens at all. But we do get a lot of people looking for cures because if you cured Alzheimer's dementia, if you, if, if in only 10 states, just average states, were part of this compact, it would be about $20 billion. A blockbuster drug is $1 billion a year, maybe it's for several years. But $20 billion and it's just, here you go, here's the prize, you get it upfront. And so any investors, hedge fund managers, anything like that, if you have a little company, biotech company that's, that might have the cure for Alzheimer's dementia, you better believe they're gonna get funding. And right now, they're not getting funding because that's, that's the, and the only thing that might happen is they would get bought up, bought up by something and then nothing happened. But this way, they're gonna be fully funded because actually bringing things to market, although it can be expensive when you're at that stage, it's certainly worth the money for those companies to invest in. So we were able to pass this out of the House in March of this year. It's ever in the Senate. Unfortunately, the healthcare industry is quietly, staunchly opposed, as you might guess, because if we start curing diseases, then they make less money. The, that's, and that's, of course, I don't blame them, and they're businesses. At least the for-profit ones are businesses, I have a different opinion for the nonprofit ones, they're supposed to be charities. But that's something that we hope to see pass in the Senate. I don't have high hopes, though, but I do have high, or some better hope for the next session if we're able to do that, that we're able to get this done. It's potentially in, during the budget season when, when things kind of have to happen. So that brings me to healthcare costs. Because that's, if we, if we were to pass the Cure Bill, again, for no risk for the taxpayers, we could actually lower, considerably lower, healthcare costs that are out there. But the other, there are other initiatives that have, that have been proposed and I've proposed some that we've talked about before, that are out there that are still being stopped. And this is the, this is the initiative I really wanted to bring to your attention. So, an initiative, say, healthcare price transparency, which we passed into law in 2015, which, which says, we deserve to know what the costs are if it's not an emergency before we get a healthcare service, just like everything else in society. No matter what we do, no matter what we spend our money on, we always know what the, what it's gonna cost before we agree to spend our money, except in healthcare. And that's crazy. And the fact that no state in the country or the federal government actually just says, you have to give an estimate of what the costs are, that shows you how powerful the healthcare industry is. It's a law right now that if you get your car fixed, that they have to give you a good faith estimate upfront. That's a law in Ohio. That's a law in Ohio, but not for healthcare. So this is something where, you know, we've, I've been fighting this. It's, it was passed into law. The governor did not draft rules, as was required by the law. And then it was eventually then taken to court on the argument that there weren't rules drafted, even though I really don't think you need them, because you just need to give an estimate of what the costs are. I don't know particularly why you need rules, but, you know, I'm an attorney, so I get how it works. They made arguments based on that, but then they sued the guy that was supposed to draft the rules, Governor Kasich, who obviously is, you know, on their side of this argument, and their, and then immediately agreed with them in the lawsuit to an injunction. And currently, the law has an injunction against it, which is why you're not getting healthcare estimates upfront. So just to, just to add one extra thing on there, there is essentially Transparency 2.0, which I hope, potentially, next session, will be able to get done. And instead of the current law, where a healthcare provider would give you an estimate before, right before a service, they'd have to just do it right before, when you're already in the office, when you're already there for your MRI scan or for a lab. You know, that could probably be too late, because you're already there most of the time. So the, the new and improved version would have not the provider giving you the estimate, but your insurance company. And they would give you the estimate 24 hours after you make an appointment, because the provider will be required to say, so-and-so made an, this patient made an appointment for these things, send that to the insurance company. Insurance company electronically sends you an estimate of not only what the, the retail cost is from the provider, but also the insurance cost, as is in, in current law that we passed, and then what your out-of-pocket is going to be. And of course, the insurance company is, they know that more than anybody, what your deductible and copay and everything would be. But they also would have an incentive, and we wouldn't require this, but they would do it, to say, I see you made an appointment with Dr. Butler, and it's going to be $5,000 for that simple procedure. Did you know that if you went to this, you know, Dr. A, Dr. B, Dr. C, or Dr. D, that it's only $500, or $700, or $800, and these, you know, these doctors have even higher quality? So would you consider going there? They're going to be incentivized to do that. And when you think about the effect that that would have on our healthcare system in this country, where everybody got an estimate within 24 hours after making a, any appointment for healthcare services, what that would do, how much money that would save, that, I think, pales in comparison when you're talking about budget and all the different things that are out there. How much we would save for the government, how much families would save, how much businesses would save, how more competitive they'd be, how better-shaped Wright State University would be, because, you know, they're, we're in the hole earlier because of unexpected healthcare costs. You know, there'd be, you know, the RTA, who, that was, that was their problem between the big fight, was healthcare costs. Think about how better off our country would be if we did that, this one simple, common sense thing. And the reason I bring it up is that when I need help in Columbus, I mean, there are some, there are a few of us in Columbus. There, you know, unfortunately, not, not many, that are willing to take on Governor Kasich, are willing to take on, you know, the healthcare industry, who has armies of lobbyists. But we, we need assistance. We need help. And everybody who would benefit from this. So, you know, your, your small business associations, chambers of commerce, though healthcare industry happens to be part of that, you know, your pension funds, your, you know, your unions, your, anybody who, you know, almost everybody, really, but every organization that's impacted by the out-of-control healthcare costs that we have, you would think would be a supporter of a very simple and potentially highly effective reform, as the one, like I discussed, could be anything else. But the problem is that, in Columbus anyway, among the organizations, there's like a non-aggression pact. Nobody ever wants to mess with some other special interest. They, whether it's budget, so if I said, for example, I changed the Transparency 2.0, and I said, all right, we're going to, I'm proposing this bill, and the first, you know, $350 million that we save in healthcare costs in Medicaid, because Medicaid has gone up $4.3 billion, nearly double, since I became a representative. So when I, when I first became a representative, as you well know, the local government fund was cut in half, 50%. It's about $350 million a year. So that's $350 million. In the meantime, Medicaid spending has gone up $4.3 billion, just state spending. This includes Medicaid expansion, just state spending in a growing economy. So you would think that all the local governments, who want the, the, you know, the local government fund to be restored, would be an ally. If I, if I said, and I'm, I'm putting this forward, that we will restore the local government fund, we'll even give you, you know, at 50% more than what was taken before, if you pass this bill, if we can take on the healthcare industry. And I already know, but it, it's an interesting discussion, that nobody will, will do that. I wouldn't get any additional support. And it could, it could be that, it could be education, it could be anything else. Because nobody looks for their extra money, that if they need funding for whatever it is, roads or bridges or public safety, they never say, you know, these guys over here in Medicaid Department, they're overfunded. If we did reforms, we'd save money there. So, you know, you don't see education, people that are advocating for more resources for education, which we absolutely need, going, hey, there's money over here. You can, let's do a reform. Let's go after them. And then, and testify in support of whatever reform it is that might impact that other special interest. And that's, I just bring that to your attention, because I know you've talked a lot in the past about these things. And that fact is one that is, that needs to be brought out more to the people. Because we need to have, in Columbus, you know, or especially in DC, people looking for savings and ways to reform in order to get more funding. So a lot of times, we hear, we'll just fund, you know, that, all, all the focus is just more funding for us. That's it. We need more funding. Well, you know, yes, you do, but it's, you know, raise taxes, and people are already struggling with all the taxes they have to pay, or I don't know, hope for a windfall, because the money usually has to come from somewhere. So sorry for kind of that tangent. Just a couple of other different initiatives. There is an initiative I'm working on. I talked to the utility companies recently. This is about energy efficiency. So energy efficiency is another way that we can obviously save money. If, if all of our, if, whether it's government schools or commercial businesses, you spend less, like, you know, you use less electricity, then you will save money. That'd be a great thing. That's something that we've tried to do in the past, but, and we're doing it in a way that's actually not saving as much money as it could. And so in a similar fashion to what I just described for, in, in, in healthcare, in terms of the difference between what you save and what you kind of were paying, that's how the Cure Bill is funded, the same thing would be for energy efficiency. Energy efficiency company goes to business, or, or goes in this building and says, hey, Oakwood Council, I'll save you $50,000 a year. The citizens of Oakwood, $50,000 a year if you let me retrofit your building, and do all these things. And it's been, you know, it'll, it'll cost you, though. You know, it's going to cost you, you know, $400,000, but we'll save you $50,000 a year. And right now, you'd say, hmm, I, I don't know. You better sell me on it, because if it doesn't come through, and we don't save $50,000 a year, and we're going to be out $400,000. And you just have, you generally would have to take the risk. And if it doesn't pan out, then it's on you. But in this, with this bill that I'm working on, it wouldn't be on you, because they'd be able to say, all right, we'll install $400,000. You never pay anything other than what you were paying. You just keep paying what you were paying. You, we will assume you were using the same amount of electricity that you were using before you retrofitted your building. And even, and when you use less, the difference in the energy usage, and that amount of money, with the utility company, as you pay the utility company what you, for the energy that you would have used, the difference goes to the vendor. That's how the vendor gets paid. It's a voluntary way for the vendors to contract with different commercial entities or governmental entities out there. But it's easy for you, because, and no risk for you, because you'll just simply still pay what you were paying. But then after the period of payback is done, you know, the eight years, then you'll be more efficient. You'll save the taxpayers' dollars at no risk to yourself. So it's a, and talking to the energy efficiency companies, they think that's great, and they actually want to assume the risk. They're confident in their ability to save electricity, and this puts it all on them, instead of on the businesses. So a lot more businesses, a lot more governmental entities, I hope, would opt to retrofit their buildings, and then we have much more energy efficiency in our, in our communities, in our country, and our, and in our different businesses. So another initiative that, that should be coming out soon is on first responders and their personal information. So if a first responder has, you know, a death threat, or they have a, a case where they're worried about their families, they can call the Secretary of State's office and request to have all their information that's publicly available redacted. So that way, you know, somebody who's trying to hurt them or their families wouldn't be able to get the information. Unfortunately, there are some counties where their real estate records are not redacted. Like, they're, it's still out there. You can search for the person on the real estate, on, online for real estate and figure out right where they live. So obviously, that's not what, what the intent is. So this just closes that loophole and makes sure that all the county recorders and treasurer will actually eliminate them from the record completely. So if you were to search for, you know, this first responder, it'll just pop up as no record exists. Different states do it in different manners. Sometimes they just redact it, and you're like, oh, well, somebody lives there that had their information redacted. This just says, no record. And so we'll be looking to do that. I just want to, I know, kind of going long, so I'll skip, skip a couple of things here. I want to talk about some criminal justice issues, too. One of them was already passed, and unfortunately, for big counties like Montgomery County, we did not fare well. And there's been a lot of that, as you know, where, you know, kind of like, all the rest of the counties in the, in the state have been ganging up on cities. We've seen that with kind of the townships, because there's more township representation in the state. But in this case, there was a initiative called TCAP, which penalizes you or, or local governments from sending people to prison. So there are courts, if you send somebody to prison, then you will eventually have to pay a pretty steep financial penalty for the lower-level offenses. They want you to keep them with you. And so everybody thinks that's a bad idea financially. And, and really, in a way, it's just a way to have you bear more of the burden for these individuals. And so there was a big fight about it. I was against it. What ended up happening was just the 10 largest counties in Ohio have it, it's mandatory. Everybody else, it's optional. Every, everywhere else where it's optional has already opted out, I, I believe. Might be, there's a couple of other ones. But, but so we're stuck with it. It's mandatory. So what that means is, in the spirit of what we've seen before for lower-level offenses, for fourth or fifth-degree felonies especially, then there's going to be more of a, an emphasis on community control. And sometimes that's appropriate, but sometimes it's not. Judges need to have discretion. So if you have a repeat offender who's a really bad person, and they need to get sent to prison, we need to be able to send them to prison. And right now, that's not, that's not the law in Ohio. And that brings me to Issue One, which is on the ballot coming up. Issue One, in my opinion, is very dangerous and inhumane. So it's inhumane in that somebody, what it, first, first what it does is it says, if you are caught with any drug at all, whatever it is, on your, on your person, then you cannot actually even get a felony. You won't even get a felony. So you have drugs on you, you, you can't get a felony, and you can't even get sent to jail, which you can for a misdemeanor. But in this case, you're not allowed to go to even jail for just having drugs on you until the third offense within two years, and then you can go to jail, but not prison. So it dramatically lowers the penalties for possession. And I understand the intent, because we need to make sure that people that are addicted get treatment, because sending them to prison is a really bad idea. Or even jail, really bad idea. We don't want to do that. We want to get them in treatment. But the problem is, if you have somebody who's addicted, especially to heroin or methamphetamines, or some of these, you know, really severe drugs, they're not, unless you have something to hang over their head to say, okay, you're going to prison, or you can go to treatment, and treatment's going to be way better, then they're not going to go to treatment. That's, you could ask any judge, any prosecutor, even public defenders, will tell you they're not going to, to go into treatment by themselves. They need some type of, of pressure. And that comes from judges. And judges know, because it's, they know who's in front of them. But this takes it away from them. Takes their, that, the ability to encourage them to go into treatment away. And add, people who are addicted are, they're just going to, they're going to be in grave danger, because they're never going to go into treatment, almost never, because they're ill. It's a mental illness. When you are addicted, it's a mental illness. And unless you're going to commit them, like we would somebody who's schizophrenic or bipolar, which we don't do for people who are addicted in this state, then there's no way. They'll, they will continue to use drugs and eventually be in grave danger. And if it's methamphetamines, they'll also particularly endanger everybody else. Because unlike heroin, where you, you know, generally fall asleep when you're overdosing or when you're using a lot of it, methamphetamine, you're violent. It's different than heroin. And methamphetamine is the new, that's the new epidemic that we have. It's, it is, it is rampant. It's everywhere, especially in Montgomery County, which leads me to the second part of Issue One. So Issue One also says that if you are, for any offense, other than, I think, murder and maybe rape, but any other offense, and there's a lot of horrible offenses out there, you can get 25% cut off your sentence by completing some educational training. And that, that, to me, means we're just going to let more people out. And some of these people do not need to be let out. They need to be, they need to be behind bars to keep, keep everybody safe. And particularly, drug dealers. So I, I think that drug, people that, drug addicts, people addicted to drugs need treatment. They don't need to go to prison or jail, but we need to get them into treatment, and we need to get them into long-term treatment. But the people that are dealing, including the people that are just, are couriers, they need stiff penalties. Because if you're dealing drugs, if you're putting heroin or meth into the hands of, of somebody else for their use, then you are doing the same thing as an armed robber is doing, because you're, you're doing something for money, and people die. What's the difference? And a second-degree felony is for armed robbery, which is pretty stiff prison, prison time. And if you did that now in your current law, it's a fifth-degree felony. If I sold everybody here heroin, then I would get a fifth-degree felony. And even in your current law, you couldn't send me to prison. That's our current law. And so of course, you know, drug dealers are smart. They only carry the, the proper amount. They actually, if anyone's read the, the book Dreamland, actually, it's a really good account of how they do this. They put little balloons, this is for heroin, and they put it in their mouth, so they can swallow it if they get pulled over. But even if they get caught, it's a small amount. And so they never face prison time. And of course, they never cooperate with law enforcement, because why would they? They're, you know, that's, they could be attacked by their drug dealer for cooperating, but there's no deterrent at all. No prison time. So Issue One, in my opinion, and those are some serious flaws with Issue One. And it's, I think, it's not only a grave threat to the safety of, of our people, but also very inhumane for the people who are addicted, who really do need treatment. We need to make sure that we have the proper treatment available. So I'll, I have other stuff, but I'll wrap it up there. So happy to answer any questions.
Questions for?
Yeah, I do. Jim, so I, I understand it's on Issue One, and you, you mentioned the intent is to get people in treatment, and I totally understand that. The cynical side of me says, and I just want your opinion on this. Are the individuals who are writing this up, proposing this, is it having to do with our overcrowded jails, and they just don't want people in prison, because that's taxpayer, taxpayer dollars? And, I mean, I, I don't understand, and maybe I am missing something, besides the intent of treatment, why they would, I mean, it's, it, you know, we all have our opinions on how harsh penalties should be. And without getting into that, how are they able to justify lessening the penalties that are even out there now? I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding why. I, I just want to hear their, whether it's right or wrong, I want to hear their opinion. Why do you think they are trying to lessen penalties on all these drug problems we're having?
So, and I can't speak for them, of course. And their, and their arguments are-
They've had to have justified it.
Sure, sure. And they'll have, they'll be, you'll see. There'll probably be more ads out there. But the intent is something I looked at when I, when I was drafting the drug package that, that'll be coming out soon, that I've been, that I've told you guys about before, which is that you don't want people who are addicted to be in jails and prisons. That's not the place for them. They're mentally ill. They're only there because they're mentally ill. They've committed theft, or something that's, you know, just to get money so they can keep taking the drug, some non-violent offense, then they just need help. And so from, on a surface level, that's the argument, that they just need help. We don't, and, and so we won't send them to prison or jail. But I think they overlook the fact that if you just take away the prison or jail side, then there's no help for them, because you can't force them to get treatment under our, under our system. There's no doing that. And so I think it's just a, and I don't know what they're ultimately, the people that are funding this, because they're, and they're, they're from out of state, but, you know, funding this constitutional amendment. It goes into our constitution, by the way. This isn't just a statute. So that's the argument, though. And it, and it does, and I agree with it, but I think that, and I, and this is part of the package that I'll be introducing, take everybody who's addicted, who, who are currently in prison or jail, or that might get sent to prison or jail, and then give them the choice, instead of that- them the choice instead of that to go to long-term, up to three years of treatment, like real treatment that's going to work. Because right now, our treatment doesn't work. But give them that option, and then if they complete the program, which includes an additional three years of, of working, and we'll make sure that they have the ability to work, and moving out of the neighborhood and mentoring the people who are going through treatment, then you can take their record of its nonviolent offenses and sweep it clean, seal it, so they can start, start a new life. So we have to give them hope, too. But it's, this is not the way to give them hope. This is only going to result in them carte blanche, just continuing to feed their addiction. And, and unfortunately, we'll have, you know, we're making some progress, at least on overdose deaths, not on the amount of people who are addicted, because there's a lot of, there's a big shift from heroin and fentanyl over to meth, but we'll have even more people addicted. And, and our overdose deaths will go, start going back up if issue one were to pass.
Other questions?
Yeah, I want to go back to what you started off with, the dangerous times that you were talking about-
Yes.
And the lame duck session, and, and sitting in this position, I think I've heard the same speech, this is what, my, almost my 10th year, and it always starts with the same thing, saying that, you know, we just can't get rid of it. This is the way the system works, we can't get rid of it. And I also look at the fact that for the last eight years, our state has basically been run by one party. So I'm wondering to myself, if one party is running this one system, they have control over every aspect of state, why can't anything get done? And I, I'm, we're in that time period where we're going to be seeing all the ads, vote for me, vote for me, vote for me. And I'm thinking to myself, why? Because nobody seems to want to do anything about the issues that actually need to be addressed. You know, I hear all these great things about, you know, the things that you want to do on healthcare and the things that you want to do with criminal justice system, but when it really comes down to it, what we've seen over the last eight years has been attack of home rule, you know, the state basically being an active enemy of local government. I mean, there's really no other description for it. I mean, under no circumstances, you know, other than the fact that we know you, do I ever feel like if we have a problem that we're going to go to the state for anything? We've, we've just become independent in that, that sense. So I hear, I hear all these things like, I want to introduce this and I want to introduce that, but you're part of the party that has control over everything, so if you as that person can't get anything done, how do we, how do we have any hope that anything will get done?
Well, because it's not about party. That's the, and as we've discussed many times, you know, and I fought members of my own party, including the governor, on many of these issues, and the party actually has nothing to do with it. It wouldn't matter who was in charge in terms of getting things done because it's not party, it's people that are the representatives that are beholding to special interests for whatever reason, and the people that are trying to serve the people, and the people that, and that's, and in my opinion, there's an equal number in both parties. And it doesn't matter if who's in charge, look, you know, we've seen that, look at DC. I mean, in Ohio, we've had one, you know, one party in charge, but DC's been back and forth. Anything getting better? If it's the same thing no matter what, and it's because the, the, it's the, some people say establishment. I don't want to paint that broad of a brush, but it's, if you are doing what some special interest wants you to do, and usually that comes through leadership, and as you know, I ran for the Speaker of the House in 2014 to try to stop this, so at least one branch of government, we would have been able to get rid of lame duck. In fact, I ran on that. If, if you just say, look, we're not, we're not doing it, and one branch says that, we would have been able to get rid of it. So it's, that hap, that battle is not about party. A lot of people assume it is, but it's like professional wrestling. You know, if you see, especially I see it on TV, it's back and forth, you know, the parties always fighting each other. There are good people in both parties, and people, and people work together, and it's commonly understood in, in within Columbus, I'm sure, and I know in DC, and talking to some, some people in Congress, that there's the same fight that always happens, and it's, it's really a fight between money versus what's right for people. And that's why things aren't getting done, but we're still fighting. Sometimes we can get some things done, we get the most we can get done, and some things, sometimes if you have enough pressure, which is why I was talking about needing help, so if we can get more of you, more different organizations, more, you know, of people in the education industry, if you're talking about whatever the idea is, and you can, we can, we could maybe do something. But when you're fighting against your own party and, you know, the kind of, the other parties, same type of people, and then you're just a small band of, of people that are trying to do the right thing, you need help. And that's why, that's the problem. But we, we would be much more, we would stand much more of a chance in, in our efforts of getting these things done if in Columbus, there were, and I know you guys are very active, so I, I certainly applaud you for, you know, you've driven to Columbus and testified many times, and, and we need more of that, and we need, we specifically need the more, not just the, the one narrow issue that has specifically to do with, which obviously you got to care about that, but I would, I would recommend looking more broadly towards, well, you know, local governments, local government funds is a great example. Local government fund cut, cut in half in 2011, and yeah, we had an $8 billion budget deficit, which has been, you know, argued, but we definitely had a budget deficit, we had a problem, we had to make cuts. So cuts had to be made, but then maybe afterwards or even during, was there a way that we could have found other savings? And nobody does that analysis in the special interest world, including the special interest world, which is the Ohio Municipal League, which represents cities, which you guys are part of, and, or the Township Association, or the, you know, the business groups, or whatever the group is, but nobody comes in when you say, this is going to help you. We're going to, we're going to be able to save billions of dollars over here that I can, we can redirect to you, and you can't get any, no takers. So that, because, that's why I wanted to tell that story, because that's not about party. That's just, that's about money and then, and then this kind of tacit agreement or secret, kind of not secret, but among all the special interests to not fight each other.
I think, I think one special interest that, that I have direct knowledge of is the Ohio Society of CPAs. When Jim was the, one of the, I think, one of maybe, maybe the only one in the Ohio House that voted against House Bill Five that was, that was, you know, definitely going after cities' revenue sources, you know, I believe that that, that vote, that was courageous, and Peggy Lainer also voted against it in the Senate-
Peggy Lainer also did, absolutely. There were some, there were others, too.
Yeah, I, but I believe, I think there was four in the, in the House and one, one or two in the Senate. I believe that vote cost you the House speakership. And the Ohio Society of CPAs, two years ago or four years ago, wouldn't endorse Representative Butler, and he clearly has a strong business record, pro-business record. They did endorse you this year, that's my understanding, but for the Ohio Senate race between Sherrod Brown and Jim Roneisi, the courageous Ohio Society of CPAs endorsed both candidates. Now, what is the point of an endorsement? That's just covering their butts. And there's a reason that I'm not on their Christmas card list, and that's part of it. But I know that there was an article in the New York Times in August talking about, you know, the state now does have a surplus, and that we've replenished the, the rainy day fund, and, but many small towns and larger towns in Ohio are still hurting because of the cuts to the local government fund. The one, the, the Ohio Mayors Association said, you know, reasonable people can disagree on the best use of Ohio's rainy day fund, but as a bipartisan coalition of mayors, we find it unfortunate that Governor Kasich doesn't see the value of Ohio's cities and small towns. Nearly, more than 90% of cities and towns have delayed significant road repairs, and nearly three quarters of the state's municipalities have replaced full-time employees with part-time workers and increased fees to maintain basic services. The local government fund has been cut to 349 million in 2017 from the 674 million 10 years ago. And when Kasich was asked about this, his response was, "We have constant whining from local governments," Kasich said. "They want handouts, they want it to be easy." Well, I am happy to report that there's only 105 days left in Governor Kasich's regime, and as far as I'm concerned, good riddance to him. I'm confident that I think both sides, you know, you know how I'm going to vote in this election, but I believe that, that the, the Dwyane Huestead ticket and, and obviously the Cordray, who's his-
Sutton.
Sutton ticket, I think, have both given us some hope that they're going to try to repair the broken relationship between the state and local government. So I'm, I'm encouraged about that. But, but as you, as you can, as you can see, it, you know, I, I understand, I understand your frustration. We have such a quaint custom here that we actually read our ordinances and our resolutions, and we actually do it over two meetings, you know, as opposed to, you know, you got 30, 35 seconds to read this 500-page bill, and then you have to vote on it. It's, it's, maybe this is more community service than politics, I don't know. But, but I understand your frustration because I've seen it, you know, up close and personal as well.
Well, and that's, and I definitely, I think everybody here would agree that local government's the best, and that's the reason. Because you're, you're deliberate, community servants, you're obviously not doing it for the money. You know, you're, you're not trying to reach some higher office or anything like that, you're just trying to serve the people. So your ratio of servants of the people to, you know, people that are serving the special interest is really on the right side in local, in almost every local government. And that's, that's why, that's the best government that's closest to the people, so.
One, I have one last thing that I would bring to your attention, Jim, is especially since you have this interest in the price transparency in, for healthcare. I'm hearing more and more reports that people can go into an in-network hospital for an emergency, but as it turns out, some of the physicians that are, you know, taking care of you in your in-network hospital are considered out of network, and they're charging exorbitant prices. Now, obviously, when you go into an ER room, you don't have a lot of choice on who's going to take care of you. That, that's unconscionable, what they're doing, and I know, and I think there's some class action lawsuit floating around right now, too. But in terms of, I don't think that if you're in an in-network hospital, the hospital should be required to just charge in-network prices for all the physicians that are going to be taken care of you. And so I just wanted to bring that to, people need to be aware of that when you go to an in-network hospital. And, you know, Kettering, Miami Valley, what either one, you know, I think have, have this issue.
And Mayor, common sense was, is just what you said.
Yeah.
Everyone would say, it's the hospitals, you know, you're, the hospitals employing whoever it is that's out of network, they should make sure they're in-network, otherwise it's on the hospital.
Right.
I guess the most powerful special interest in the state are the hospitals. So they don't, that's, they're not, because I've been working on this issue for some time, along with, you know, all the different healthcare issues that I work on, and, and that one's tough, again, for the same reasons that transparency and everything else, because, you know, they have so much power.
Mm-hmm.
And that's, but that's just a common sense thing. And I'll tell you just one little anecdote, so that's, that's, I don't know if you guys saw, this was reported maybe a week ago. And of course, you've probably heard about the fact that when you go to a pharmacy, there are these contracts with the pharmacy benefit manager and the pharmacist where you're going in there and you have a $30, so you got a $30 copay or $30 deductible, and then, but the drug's $10. And the pharmacist wasn't allowed to say, do you know that this drug is only $10 if you just pay cash? Versus, so, and then they were forced then to charge $30 or whatever, these, these gag clauses. That was, that was actually in contract. And we've started, we, we did something about that, it hasn't passed yet, but we were, we're working on that. But it's, that's not the worst of it, because hospitals have, and I, and I'd be willing to bet, I mean, it's, it's confidential, but hospitals have contracts with the insurance companies, all the insurance companies, that the insurance companies are not allowed to tell you a lower or higher quality provider. They have gag clauses in those contracts as well, for the insurance companies. The insurance companies are prohibited from telling you just what I said about the transparency, the, the new version of transparency, where you could go to doctors A, B, C, or D, they are prohibited by contract from doing that, in many, many contracts. And obviously, the effect of healthcare costs and all of us is detrimental, you know, for all of us, so.
I want to thank you for coming and informing this, this was very enlightening. Thank you for your service to our community.
Thank you for your service.
Jim and I, Jim and I got to go to Oakwood High School on Friday because the C-SPAN bus was in town. It's taking their 50-state tour, and we, we got to go into, into the big bus, and it's really pretty cool. It's full of computers, they show all the different, show, you can get all the different downstreaming things from C-SPAN, and they've been through, I think, about 46 states. They actually put it on a boat and, and shipped it to Hawaii, and then the boat went to Alaska because there's only a certain way you can get into Alaska, you, you knew more about that than I did. They still have to go to New England, but it was, it was a neat, it was a neat time to, to share, and got to see all the high school and junior high kids got to go through that and had some good discussions with teachers and the like, so.
Great.
Again, thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
And we are going to have a resolution opposing issue one tonight, Jim, so, yes. And does anyone else wish to address us in the visitor section? All right, then we will close that part of our agenda, and then we will go to legislation, and Councilmember Epley has a resolution regarding solid waste management.
Thank you, Your Honor. A resolution approving the solid waste management plan of the Montgomery County Solid Waste Management District. Ohio is divided into a number of districts for the management of solid waste. The primary objectives of each district are to ensure an adequate disposal capacity and to reduce reliance on landfills. Our local district is the Montgomery County Solid Waste Management District, which includes all cities and townships in Montgomery County. Each solid waste district is required by law to adopt and periodically update a plan for the management of solid waste within its jurisdiction, and our district is currently involved in this process. The process is overseen by the Solid Waste Management Policy Committee, an advisory body that includes representatives from each community. The committee is responsible for drafting the plan, obtaining EPA review, conducting a public hearing, and then presenting the approved draft to the Board of County Commissioners and to each community within the district for ratification. Council has received the draft plan that was approved by the Solid Waste Management Policy Committee on August 29, 2018. It has been reviewed by the city manager, who, as a member of the Solid Waste Financial Advisory Committee, has been involved with the plan development over the past year and has kept council informed as the plan was developed. He has recommended that council ratify the plan, which will be accomplished by adopting this resolution. I move that council adopt this resolution.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or questions for Councilmember Epley? Hearing none. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
And then I have a resolution expressing city council's opposition to state issue one. When Ohio voters go to the polls on Tuesday, November 6, 2018, they will be asked to vote on state issue one entitled, "Issue One: To Reduce Penalties for Crimes of Obtaining, Possessing, and Using Illegal Drugs." This is a ballot initiative that has been proposed as an amendment to the Ohio Constitution. Proponents of state issue one argue that this amendment would reduce the number of people incarcerated for nonviolent drug crimes and increase the options and funding available for treatment of drug addiction. This may be worthy goals in the abstract, but the devil is in the details. And a review of the details leads me to agree with Ohio Supreme Court Chief Justice Marino Connor, who has said the passage of issue one would have catastrophic, catastrophic consequences for Ohio. Here are just a few of the problems with issue one. It would greatly alter the sentencing laws for obtaining, possessing, and using drugs such as fentanyl, heroin, methamphetamine, cocaine, LSD, and other controlled substances. Ohio laws would become one of the, the most lenient in the nation and would tie judges' hands from imposing punishment where necessary. Jail would not even be an option for an offender who possessed up to 19 grams of fentanyl, enough to kill 10,000 people. It would reclassify felony drug possession cases as misdemeanors. Not only would this demean the seriousness of those offenses, but it would shift these cases from the jurisdiction of county common police courts to local municipal courts that have neither the funding nor the specialized personnel necessary to address significant drug issues. County drug programs, which have been very effective, would be made obsolete, while the burden on municipal courts would grow immediately and exponentially. Drug treatment costs currently paid by the state would become an unfunded mandate to be paid by local governments that are already struggling to fund measures to combat the opioid crisis as a result of state budget cuts. State issue one is projected to generate a savings of 100 million annually, a number which I dispute, but those savings will benefit the state only. Local governments will see significant increases in cost for treatment, probation, courts, and local- and local jails, costs that local taxpayers will be required to fund. When, not if, but when, problems arise under Issue One, they cannot be fixed legislatively because these are changes that will have been written into our state constitution. Addressing even minor problems will require another statewide initiative and election. For all of these reasons, State Issue One is bad for Ohio and bad for Oakwood, and the resolution I am introducing will formalize council's opposition to this misguided ballot initiative. I move council adopt this resolution and would ask for a second.
Second.
Any other comments or discussions regarding this resolution? Hearing none. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
I believe this is the first time, at least on my term on city council, going back to 2003, that the Oakwood council has formally opposed or even supported a statewide ballot issue. That's how serious the flaws in State Issue One are, so I encourage all the citizens to vote no on number one, and make sure you tell your classmates that as well. Thank you. That concludes our legislation. We do have a staff report from our finance director, Cindy Stafford, CPA. Welcome, Cindy.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council, city manager, and staff residents. I'm going to be brief, it is getting late. I want to cover the 2018 financials through year-to-date August, and I'm doing year-to-date August because today is October 1st. And unfortunately, it takes about a day to two days to go through the process of closing the city's books, so that did not happen today, so it should be by tomorrow. I'll talk a little bit about the 3.75 mil property tax renewal issue on the November 6 ballot, talk a little bit about the online resources and the transparency that we, as the city of Oakwood, have put out on our city website. I'll talk a little bit about the do-not-solicit ordinance, and finally, just a brief discussion of the Finance Department. These first five slides basically are, as I said before, year-to-date August 2018. The first one you see up there is the city's general city services. The general city services is basically everything but refuse, water, sanitary sewer, and the stormwater funds. And so, basically, that means it's safety, leisure, public works, streets, all the rest of that. And that's how we basically look at when we budget the funds into those five different categories. What I look at at this point in time, when I'm looking at the budget, is a comparison between the budget and where we are today. That's the numbers that you see kind of down here at the bottom of my slide. Obviously, through August, we should be about 67% through our budget at this point in time with receipts and disbursements. If you look at where we are for general city services, we're at 74%. Almost 10 million of the 12 million that we budget, or a little over 12 million that we budget, comes from two main revenue sources, our income tax receipts and our property tax receipts. Those are our two biggest. Today, we are at about, or a little bit, 4.1% below where we were last year. We budgeted 7.4 million this year, in this year's 2018 budget. We're a little bit below, about 200, or if things continue the way they're going, we predict that we will be about 200,000 below by the time we get to the end of the year. That's primarily because of Dayton's income tax increase of a quarter percent and Centerville's increase of about half a percent. Those impact us directly for our residents who live in Oakwood but work in those two jurisdictions. The other piece to that is our property taxes. We're at 86% of our budgeted property taxes of about 2.5 million dollars to date. We receive, when it comes to those two main sources of revenue, the bulk of the income taxes come in in the months of April and May. Property taxes are kind of split in the months of April and September, that's when we receive the county settlements. As you know, we pay, you pay your property taxes in February and July, so by the time the county rolls that through and does all their balancing, we receive those funds in April and September. So that's why we're at about 74%. I estimate by the end of the year, we'll be real close to budget, despite the fact that income taxes are slightly lower. I say that because we did receive some unexpected revenue. We laugh when we get this revenue every year, because we've gotten it every year for a while now, it's a worker's comp rebate. This year, it's about 141,000. Basically, we're getting back the payments that we made into the state's workers' compensation fund. They go through and magically, there's a surplus, and so they give that back. So this year, they gave back about 141,000 dollars of what we paid into that over the last, actually, that was based on 2016's, and where 2016 ended the year for the workers' comp fund at the state. When it comes to disbursements, we're at 62%. Again, we'll be close to where we budgeted at the end of the year, and I say that because we'll start making some of those larger tax payments for some of our capital projects, our street projects, in the next month. We've already paid some, we'll pay the rest of them, and then we'll get closer to where we should be when it comes to the timeline of our budget. The next slide is refuse, the refuse fund, and if you look at, again, where we are with regards to budget, we're almost exactly where we anticipate at this point in time. There really isn't anything unexpected, other than we do expect us to be along that same line, and come close to where we budget at the end of the year. The next three funds, the water utility, the sanitary sewer, and the stormwater are enterprise funds, and those, when we look at the water fund, oops, we're looking at, again, these numbers at the bottom, the 64% that you see there, when I budget revenue, receipts for water, it's all based on the weather and how dry it is. July, August, and September are our biggest water usage months, we're partway through that, meaning receipt-wise, so we should see that number creep up as we get through the last, or the next couple of months. So those should pop up and increase and get closer to what we've budgeted. The disbursements, when I look at those, we're at 55%. That is really just a timing of our expenses. If you look at online, and I'll show, or talk about this later, we put these, we put our monthly reports online, there's another graph that we show on this, and it actually shows disbursements plus encumbrances. If you look at this particular slide for water at this point in time in August, you'll see that disbursements and encumbrances come close to 70%, so we're right where we expect to be budget-wise. The sanitary sewer utility fund, kind of the same thing. As we look at these numbers, again, here at the bottom, you'll notice that the disbursement number is significantly less than where we would expect to be. And I say this every time I stand up here, last year, 2017, 61% of our costs in the sanitary sewer utility fund are expenses that are a result of wastewater treatment. That treatment is handled by Dayton and Beaver Creek. So we're kind of at their mercy when it comes to their billing cycle. We should, we did receive the next quarter's billing in September, and that was paid in September, and the next one will come after year-end. So they're a little bit, they lag a little bit behind when it comes to billing, but we will encumber by the time we hit year-end, and we'll be very close to where we expect to be. The 72% receipts at this point in time is really a factor of the rate adjustment that we had, and how I budgeted, I was a little conservative as I went through that process with the rate adjustments that we made at the beginning of 2018, so I suspect that one should come in just a little bit above what we budgeted. And our last enterprise fund would be our stormwater utility fund, and if we look at that and where we stand, again, the disbursement number is much less than where we would expect to be. And the big item in there is we had a very large capital item this year, but we have an extremely skilled public works department who were able to refurbish a street sweeper, and we were able to push that expected $200,000 expenditure down the road a little ways. So we do expect that percentage to be much less than what we budgeted because of that significant savings that Public Works was able to take care of for us. Our receipts, as you can see, are right on what we would expect them to be. So I would say where we stand today, and based on what I saw today as I started closing September's books, I would predict that we'll come very close to what we budgeted by the time we hit year-end, so I'm fairly comfortable that we're in good shape at that point in time. Before I move to the next slide, I just thought I'd see if there were any questions on the finance piece of my presentation. Just a brief slide on the 3.75 mil property tax renewal issue on the November 6 ballot. That was first approved by our residents in May of 2013. It started generating revenue in 2014. It's a term of about five years, or it is five years. The current effective millage is 3.32. It raises a little over a million dollars annually for us. This money is used for city services, including police, fire, EMS, and street maintenance. The annual tax is 102 on a $100,000 home value. And as I refer you back to that first slide, this and our income taxes are our two biggest pieces of revenue that the city receives. And again, this is a renewal. It maintains the current level of property taxation, and it will not increase taxes. One of the things out there is the transparency and what transparency various cities have opted for at this point in time. We at the city of Oakwood put out online our annual audit reports, our annual city budgets are out there. Also, the monthly financial reports that are presented to council on a monthly basis are also out there, along with the memo that I give to the city manager regarding what has occurred during the current month, if there's anything unusual, unexpected, those are out there. And so I encourage individuals to go out there and look at those, if they have questions, to give the finance department a call, we're always willing to answer those questions. Also out there are all their tax forms, along with the vital records form, and that vital records form is the form that's required to be completed so that they can come in and get a certified copy of a birth or death certificate. The fee is $30, it's cash-only for that, so I always want to remind folks, it's the only service that we provide that is a cash-only, we don't take a check for that, it is a cash-only, and you do have to physically come into our office to get a copy, a certified copy of a birth or death certificate. There's also online resources through the state of Ohio if the option for a credit card is desired. No solicitation. This particular box is out on our website, and you will find that out there. This particular ordinance, Chapter 733 of our Oakwood Codified Ordinances, provides that resident, or provides residents the ability to prohibit certain types of door-to-door solicitation. It's basically an opt-out. Part of this ordinance requires that the city manager maintain a list of all of those addresses that have opted out of door-to-door solicitation, certain types of door-to-door solicitation. We found that the database in the finance department's utility software is the perfect database to house this, because what it allows us to do is, a resident moves from one address to another address, we pick up that opt-out and take it to their new address, because we assume that if they opted out at their old address, they're going to opt out at their new address. And then, we, obviously, the new individual moving in would have to opt out. How do they do that? They can do that by calling the city or visiting the city's website. This box is up there, and there's a place to go ahead and send us an email through that to tell us they would want to opt out. They can also check a box on their monthly utility bill. And the reason why I bring this up, because the ordinance also contains a provision that every five years, each property needs to reregister. So we passed this ordinance in 2013, so here we are, five years later, and as we went through, there's a little over, or almost 700, addresses that are on there that were added in that initial period in 2013 that are going to have to come off that list. So what we are going to do is, residents who are starting to fall off that list, because it's a five-year list, will receive a postcard, and they'll receive that in the next couple of weeks, and it'll basically kind of tell them exactly what I just said, and what they can do to reregister their address. And there's a box on here that they can check the box, and they can drop this in the utility payment dropbox or bring it into the city, and we will get them back on the do-not-solicit list.
Cindy, when are they going to take the names off? When will the names be taken off?
Actually, there's 667 addresses, and I shouldn't say names, addresses that will come off that list. We've already taken those off.
All right, so they are off now, so if you go in tomorrow, you can put yourself right back on.
Correct, correct. And we're going to send out a postcard, and going forward from this point on, on a monthly basis, they'll receive, about 30 days ahead of time, a postcard saying, "You're on that list, and now you're coming off because of your five years." Since we have this now in the utility, every time someone checks the box each month on their utility bill, we're changing that date, so folks that do check the box, and we have some folks who just always check the box on their utility bill and send it in, we're actually, that's kind of a moving date for them, so we'll change it every time they check that box.
Oh, so it's five years from when you joined, it's not a set date?
Correct.
Okay, all right, I follow you.
Correct. So it's a moving date.
Okay.
So it's five years from when you first opt in.
So some people could be off now, and some people are off in three weeks, in two months? Okay, all right, thank you.
The Finance Department. So I wanted to give a shout-out to the Finance Department, because if you look at the number of years of municipal experience in the Finance Department, you'll see Alice Young, who has 40 years in this year, Tracy, and she is our Assistant Finance Director, Tracy Martin, who is our payroll clerk, actually has 31 years, 19 of those as a dispatcher, and 12 of those in the Finance Department. Teresa Rushlow, our utility clerk, has 18 years of service. Linda Merkur, our tax administrator, has 15 years of service. Stacy Breland Mathis, our part-time tax clerk, has 14 years of service. I, myself, have now been here 10 years, and Tracy Davidson, who is our newest member, has been in our department two years. That's 130 years of municipal experience within the city of Oakwood. 111 of those are in the finance area, so kudos to the team. And with that said, we might ask, what exactly do we do? Well, here's your answer. 2017, we actually went through 1,154 purchase orders, which resulted in another 2682 of payments, whether those were via check or an ACH. The income tax department looks at 100%, they review 100% of the paperwork, the documents that come in. That's roughly 14,000 pieces of tax returns that come in the door. We actually audit 100% of the business returns, 25% of the individual returns. If you compare that, as I said, to what the IRS does, less than 1%. The utility, we process on a monthly basis over 3,000 utility checks, ACH payments, e-checks that come in. That's over 36,000 payments in a year's time. Vital records are birth and death certificates. Last year, we had 134 birth copies, certified copies of birth certificates, and we had 63 death certificates that we issued. 63 death certificates that we issued. And finally, our food licenses, because we do issue the food licenses, we actually had 31 food licenses. So those are just a few of the statistics of what the finance department did last year. Any questions?
On your online resources, are we still putting the minutes of our 35-member Budget Review Committee on our website, or is that somewhere else? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay, appreciate that. Any other questions?
Yes, I have a question about the no solicitation list. Do we remove people every five years? Is that the, is the assumption that some people move and you don't want the address to automatically be...
If they move within the city, we'll actually move them to their new address, and we'll opt them out at that address based on the date of their original opt-in on that list. If they actually move out of the city, we take that address off, so whoever purchases that, it's up to them to opt in to that, their current address.
Okay, okay, that makes sense. But so somebody like me, who, I've been on the opt-out list for forever, why would we take me off after five years?
The ordinance requires that every five years that everybody, that you re-register your property address.
Okay.
Could I address, could I address that just briefly?
Yes, please.
The five-year requirement, we wrote that into the ordinance at the time based on some difficulties that Inglewood had had with their do-not-solicit list and legal problems. One of the concerns the court had was that addresses get on that list, and then they never come off. And eventually, every address in town is going to be on the list, and that may not be what residents intend, so the court was concerned. They wanted a mechanism to periodically purge the list. And so we wrote that five-year, kind of a sundown provision in there, that once you've been on for five years, it'll come off, but you can always request to be added right back on.
Okay. And do we know how often, like a solicitor would solicitate or whatever, actually picks up that list? I mean, we live right on the corner, so we're like the first, the first hit, whether or not they've got the list in their hand. So it's like, because they don't, they don't understand how to read the, I mean, nobody in this industry.
And I have to admit, I did not ask the finance or the safety department.
It's okay, it's okay.
Because they would come to the safety department.
It's okay, that's probably, that's probably not a question for you.
That's definitely something I will ask Alan, and I think he is scheduled for next month or when his next one, he'll report on...
Yeah, a couple months out.
Yeah, I usually send the people back. I like, I'll save you a bunch of time, just go get that list.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Other questions for Cindy? All right. Well, please give our kudos to your staff. I know, you know, Auditor Yost was here a month or so ago, presenting you with yet another certificate of excellence in financial reporting for the city, and that can't happen without all these good people that you have working with you. So please, please give all our kudos.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. That concludes our staff report. Do we have a city manager report?
You do, Your Honor, but it's very brief. Just two quick things. The Schaefer Park Tennis Court Project is winding down. We're a couple weeks out from being completely finished there, depending on the weather, of course, but just about done, and I just want to publicly thank all the folks that live around there for their patience during the construction period. But we're just, we're approaching the end, and the most noticeable item of work remaining is, of course, putting the acrylic surface down, which is scheduled for next Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday timeframe. But again, if weather changes, that could get moved up a little bit or pushed back just a little bit, but we're real close to having that done. And then, the second thing and last thing, the 2019 budget, as you know, we're well underway here in developing that. Had a good meeting with our 35-member Citizen Budget Committee in mid-September, and at that time presented the capital program as proposed for the 19 budget. And again, as you know, the last three years, we've had a fairly significant, kind of a major capital project, unusual sort of thing for Oakwood. Two years ago, Lane Stadium, last year, the Shore Road Project, and this year, the big tennis court project. For 2019, we do not have any large, you know, kind of significant capital projects, so it's, it's more, you know, looking at, of course, doing our annual street maintenance program, sidewalk program, and then looking at some aging equipment to replace. So the bottom line is, for the overall capital budget, it will be at a reduced dollar amount from '16, '17, and '18. So we meet again with the Budget Committee here in mid-October, and at that point, we'll present the detailed, you know, line item for both revenue expense projections for 19 and all the various funds and accounts.
So that's all I have. Questions for the city manager? Do you anticipate the landscaping being completed around the tennis courts this year?
Yes, we do, Your Honor.
All right.
Probably sometime in late October or November.
All right. Very good. Do we have council comments? Councilmember Epley?
Thank you. Mayor, I have no comments tonight.
You don't want to tell them where you went last Saturday?
I went on a bike ride, because I knew that one of our presenters was going to be talking about our great bike trails.
And how far did you go?
It was 67 miles, because I overshot my destination by one mile, so I had to backtrack a mile and made it 67.
But it was all on this bikeway network?
Fifty miles was.
Fifty miles, okay. Well, congratulations on that. Councilmember Hilton?
Just two things, Your Honor. One, I drove one mile to the Public Works Department for a really cool event, the shred event. It might have a different name, but yeah, I just took all my junk that needed to be shredded, and they, with open arms, just grabbed my stuff, and it was just, it was just really neat to have a way to just feel really secure that I was getting rid of my stuff in a good way. And then, just wanted to remind people about the Family Fall Festival. It's a week from Sunday, October 14th, 2 to 5. It's always a good time. Food, hayrides, all that good stuff, so it's always fun.
Thank you. Councilmember Stevens?
Nothing this evening.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Nothing for me.
I have used up all of my comments with Representative Butler, so I will also have no additional comments. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is on November 5, 2018, and George, if you're watching, I'm adjourning the meeting.